Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
We're the county's attorney. In the case of live by councilman Brian Dunn.
Goodness, pray. Lord, thank you for bringing us all up here safely tonight. If you could please help us find ways that we can work together and bring our community together. And better this whole town. Thank you, Lord, for having me.
Yeah, thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor. Thank God for prayer. Approval of the minutes April 7th, 2019 council meeting.
I make a motion that we accept approval of the April 2nd, 2019 council meeting.
Second. Is there a question? If the motion is approved, the minutes are all in favor, they can all sign an act. They have the same rights. Okay, approval of the meeting agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the May 7th city council meeting agenda.
Second, second. Is it possible to accept your statement of approval of meeting agenda, all in favor, they can all sign an act, when our mayors have the same rights? Okay, approval by state committees, DDR, let's go.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. As Executive Director of DDR, I serve as the Chair of the City Beautification Board. Last month, on April 27th, we had more than 60 people gather downtown to show their love for Darlington and take pride in our community to make it a better place. We collected close to 40 bags of litter, planted more than 700 flowers and bushes, trimmed trees, and painted rusty signposts and railings. Thank you to all who shared their time on Saturday morning to pitch in, especially the Darlington Garden Club, who began this effort that we continue every spring and fall. So if we didn't see you in April, we'll be looking for you on our post.
All right.
The DDR's Bringing Downtown Alive concert series will kick off Thursday, May 23rd, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. with the Bow Time Band performing, the Darlington Cruisers Car Show, vendors, and more. Come enjoy the evening out with the community sponsored by Pepsi, Wilson Senior Care, and the chemists broadcasting radio stations Q 100.5, The Fan 100.1, Fox 102.1, and Maddy 4.3. We still have spots available for vendors and sponsors who make these events possible. Businesses, individuals, civic groups, and churches are invited to join the DDR as members. We recently have welcomed Darlington Presbyterian Church and Sheriff Tony Chavis to our group this month. Members who get us a call or send us an email, info@buildupdarlington.org, and we'll feature your news, employee recognition, sales, new products, special hours, and events with people interested in Darlington, as well as TV stations, radio stations, and newspapers through our text mail and email news alerts. Memberships are $150 for most businesses, $100 for civic groups, churches, and nonprofits, and $50 for individuals. You can download the application at buildupdarlington.org or just send me an email and I'll share it to you, or give me a call. And then you can also at that website sign up for news alert. Our next monthly breakfast will be 8:00 a.m., Wednesday, May 29th, Hocken's Diner. The cost is free for members and $5 for others who go towards the meal. And then also included are the dates of all of our upcoming events. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Freedom Fest is here, June the 29th, from 5:00 to 10:00 for the Darlington Raceway. We have live music, food vendors, as always. We have food vendors coming from Virginia this year. We have people selling some different types of food this year. I actually have one gentleman who wants to put the goat on spit. I've never had goats, but I told him, "Come on." It's a different type, it's a different food. We have a gentleman, he was bringing a Lebanese car, he is selling curry. We have a lady with, I see your face. I'm a little worried about the goat smell, because I know goats smells a little bit when it's cooking, and especially in that heat, but it'll be okay. It'll be all right. Several people have been real excited about the goat. He's doing plantains and peas and carrots go along with it, tostones, so it ought to be a good food truck. Then we have our usual funnel cakes, happy candy, candied apples, barbecue, we've got ice cream, we've got different types of merchandise vendors, we've got our usual the ride home, the ride home, we've got flags, we've got a lot of different merchandise vendors, so you could do some Christmas shopping out there. We've got amusement rides, we've got some bouncy houses for the young kids, and we've got more for the toddlers to do this year. We've got different sponsors than we've ever had in the past. We've got someone sponsoring the hospitality suite, which I'm very excited about. It's PD Catering, AKA Gatorade, Gatorade Victory Lane. So, Four Monkeys from Florence is coming to bring things for the kids again. I would love for everybody on the city council to come out. I know it's hot, it's a good band, fireworks are spectacular, we're using the same company again this year as we did last year. Raceway was so excited with their show that they actually are using them for the race. It's not the, we got ruined by the rain, it's a very good company, out of there. This event is really important to this community. This community is vital to this event. We want people to come, we want people to enjoy it. We don't charge people to get in. We are, however, going to charge a dollar or five dollars because our expenses have gone up, the insurance is out of sight this year, because I'm having bouncy houses for the babies. And also, our expense for the trash went up. Rather than pay the trash 4,000 dollars, that hurts, bottom line. And I'm also here tonight to again ask the city to help us improve this. I know y'all did a nice amount last year, and I would love for y'all to possibly match that again this year. This event brings people into Darlington. We had a hotel, I could pack that hotel with them, and people coming from out of town.
I was told some people, citizens, so like me, with Rock Hill, I think, was had a successful event with food trucks as vendors, and I know one of our local communities is doing that as well this weekend. Have you checked with any of those organizations this year about adding food trucks on the corner?
We do have food trucks. We have...
One or two or six?
No, last year we had 10. But the problem is, we have so many food vendors, they tend to do the same foods, and then nobody makes money. So this year, I made a promise, I met with all of my food vendors after the event, and they paid to be there. And I promised them I would only have one to two the same food, because I want them to come to Darlington and have a nice time, to have a happy time. They bring their families, and they spend their weekend, they come on Friday and leave on Sundays. And I want them to have a good time, I want them to have a good event and make money. Because I had a single mother said, "This is what, I put clothes on my trinkets back with this money." So I made a conscious decision to only have one funnel cake person, one hot dog person, one person doing this. Now I have two barbecue people, if he gets his certificate of insurance. But we do have food trucks, and I go to other people's event sites, and I sort of hijack their vendors if we don't have them. And I invite them to come to Darlington. If it's their first time, I cut their vendor off, just to get them, tell them how great we are, and how great their time will be in that raceway. Does anybody have any questions on Freedom Fest?
Say, June 29th?
June 29th.
With 5 to 10?
5 to 10. We had to keep it during that timeframe because of the heat. It's just oppressive, and we don't want people to get sick. And I have one other event that's coming up on June 27th, it's Carolina Brotherhood. We have firefighters...
27?
Yes, sir. EMS, police officers, that are riding, all first responders, that do a 600 mile bike ride. They start in North Carolina, from down through South Carolina, and they do a big loop. Well, they are riding through Darlington this year, and they will be riding right past our raceway. And I've talked to Karen, and Charlotte Motor Speedway hosted them two years ago. If Charlotte Motor Speedway can host them, so can we. They need a place to eat lunch and just have a respite, because they are pedaling for the fallen, the people that protect us. And they're riding for actually two canines that were killed while in the line of duty, bless you. So I am asking, going to be asking road crews, Hawaiians, business people, to see if we can get donations of food, have a grill out there, grill some hot dogs and some hamburgers, get some water, some Gatorade, which is what they need after riding this long in the heat. I've talked to Chief Washington, I've talked to Chief Pavanagh. Most towns have their firemen and their police officers, welcome them into the city, and then as they're getting ready to leave Darlington, wish them God's feet as they're driving or pedaling out of the town, and they give them a hero's exit. I would love to have people there with American flags, welcoming them to Darlington. We want to show them we are a great southern town with great hospitality, and if anybody would like to make a food donation, monetary donation, we're going to use it to feed these people. Give them water, give them a little respite at the raceway, and let them go.
At the raceway, you give that food to the raceway?
Yes, ma'am. And that'll be the 27th, that'll be the day. Lunchtime.
Lunchtime.
They're coming through Darlington conveniently at lunch.
Lunchtime, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll get the word out so that people can come in.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm simply just speaking for five minutes. Mr. Billy Jackson, he's on at D Avenue and Main Street.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm here about the park that's being repulsed of South Main and D Avenue. Okay? It's not a state. We all want to honor and praise Officer Terrence Caraway for his sacrifice in keeping all of us safe. But the town of Darlington, with a population under 7,000 people, has no need of three parks. The city has already spent over $200,000 and will spend more on a park dedicated to Officer Caraway. To create another park on the busiest intersection in the city seems excessive and unnecessary. The inclusion of a basketball court and picnic tables in a basically senior citizen neighborhood is, will be noisy and destructive. The young people will be drawn to a basketball court and picnic tables. Tractor trailers are turning the corner of D Avenue and South Main Street all day and all night, seven days a week and on holidays. The idea of a basketball court and young people in such a congested area is very concerning and is also lacks the, of a curfew. Where there is silence implies consent. I hope and know that I speak for my neighbors that cannot or will not speak for themselves as they feel that they have no voice in the city of Darlington. Thank you. And I have over 200 names already signed for petition by my neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Michael McKibben, sidewalks and dishes and speed limit enforcement.
Good evening, Council members. Could you spell your last name for me? M-C-K-I-B-B-E-N.
Thank you.
And I reside, my wife and I reside at 119 Spring Street, and I've lived there about five years now, and we've known, we've seen numerous people trip and fall on sidewalks, and the conditions of those sidewalks are deplorable. And I guess I would like to ask the council as to what plans or what steps need to be taken to resolve those sidewalk issues. Somebody's going to get seriously hurt, and it needs to be taken care of.
You didn't know for much, have you taken any consideration when you're talking about that?
My other concern was living on Spring Street there, and those of you that know the area know that that is a fairly narrow street, but it was news to me that Darlington Speedway has opened another Speedway, and it's down on Spring Street right now. I've talked to numerous police officers, not one of them could even tell me what speed limit was, whether it was 35 or 25 down through there. But irregardless, it has become a drag race right down through there. And I don't know what council or what I can do to change that, so I'll ask the council's help in getting the word to the correct people, perhaps doing something to improve the enforcement of speed limits for that area.
First block before you get to the hill, down a little further out?
Between that wall and the...
Sidewalks are probably both sides.
Both sides.
Drainage is a problem. I could do it. Any other questions?
Thank you very much, good time.
Thank you.
Mr. Erdis Dolster, drainage problem, drainage problem.
Ma'am, Captain, come back to concern citizens. During the storm in Florence last year, water ran in my yard for about a month. I spoke to the city about it, drainage problem about 50 yards from our house, stopped though. I found out that the elevation of the ditch on, like, 121 Allen Street. Okay, I spoke to the Department of Transportation about elevation at 192 that was not allowing the water to drain down the street. Nothing has been done as of yet. I've been, I'm a patient person, very patient. Part-time I drive cab. I've ridden around the city, and to look at the city, and to look at the ditches, and to look at the drainage problem, we have a problem. Now, maybe y'all not aware, but if you look at the news, the storm is building in the east, and they're coming east. There are going to be a ton of water that's going to be dropped in the city of Darlington that's going to have no place to run to. And I think y'all can prove that y'all got out cleaning the streets and all that kind of stuff, but you know, those people can be better used if you take two crews and start trying to clean out some of these ditches, getting all the trash and debris out of these ditches where this water can run. I do understand, I did my homework, that that is state property, those ditches are state property. But the city, I believe, can do something to relieve the problem for the residents, if the city want to do it. You know, you got about six or seven crews cutting grass around, right? Am I right or wrong? Am I right, John?
There aren't many people cutting grass.
Huh? But do another thing, where I see them all up the down the streets, cutting grass. What I'm saying is, you take two of those crews and put them with some of this equipment and start cleaning out these ditches. Y'all know where the water lines at, y'all know where the problem at. We need to attack the problem with the drainage. Now, if we attack the problem, start attacking the problem with the drainage, every year, Darlington would have the problem, some of the problem that is happening with water around. I don't know about y'all riding around looking, but these from November up to now, I've seen water line in ditches and in PBR. And it seemed like at Darlington, we should, and electively, we should be very concerned about cleaning up. Now, I said this to Mr. Earl Johnson some days ago, he asked me to be on the beautification committee. I said, "You're trying to beautify downtown Darlington." I said, "You go down in front of First Baptist Church, water's lying down there. If anybody's going to come and bring a business into the city, don't you think they're going to come and see what kind of condition the city is on a rainy day? Has anybody thought about that? Think about that. If you're going to bring a business, will you come in here and bring a business without checking, seeing what the city look like on a rainy day, a dry day, see what the traffic number is? That is a concern to me, it's been a concern. You know, I walked away a couple of years ago and they're sitting in the back. But this is a problem. We need, the city need to attack the problem. And I believe that you have the resources already on hand to do that. And if somebody say, "You need to check," then you need to check, go back and check. You get ready to come in to a budget meeting. You need to check, we have the resources. And I think you have the personnel and the equipment to start taking care of this problem. If we take care of the problem over the next three to five years, Darlington will not be experienced the problem it has with the drainage problem. But if we don't do anything, it's going to continue to back up. Like I said, I'm going to miss it. I told one lady, "If you put debris in a ditch, what's going to happen? It's going to stop up. The water's not going to drain." We need to get the word out. We need to inform the people in all the way that the water's going to drain properly. And I realize that there's certain areas that you have to go in and replace some drain pipe. The only place this thing is going to done is that we be proactive. If we're not proactive, we're going to have the same problem again. And I guess I'm looking for water sitting in my yard for another 30 days when the rains start coming again. And that is sad, that you have to have citizens to come and say, "Hey, what can..." You know, I even told Mr. Garland, I said, "Hey, if I could have took that grain off of that man though, I would have cleaned out myself." I tried taking that grain up, but I didn't have it, I would have thrown it up, do it. But please, think about that, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Terry's going, we're going to talk.
Is everybody in?
I want to speak to that.
My name is Allison Caraway. I'm the widow of Sergeant Terrence Caraway, who was killed in the October 13th Vintage Quest Incident. So I'd like to speak on behalf of him and my family. And excuse me, I have a call. Ordinary people become extraordinary through selfless acts. There is something just so powerful about unexpected acts of kindness that even the least emotional person people can't stay untouched by such acts. On October 3rd, 2018, Sergeant Teraway, Sergeant Terrence Caraway paid the ultimate sacrifice. He died to protect those that could not protect themselves. Our family has been honored with the construction of a memorial park listing all 384 South Carolina officers who have died in the line of duty. I'm sure that within the last seven months, you may have heard of this particular incident. But did you know the story, or even the names of the other 383 officers that were killed in the line of duty? I never thought that I would be standing here defending the validity or intentions of this project, much less its purpose, yet I am. Terrence Caraway knew the strength and the power of faith and family. I saw him demonstrate this in interactions with myself and others for over 30 years. It is my duty to continue his life's purpose. I have established the Terrence F. Caraway Foundation and awaiting my completed 501(c)(3) approval. This project is just the beginning of what's in store, and each project will benefit the community in many ways. When Terrence was killed, Curtis immediately came over to the house. You could tell he had been crying, but he kept it in, and he asked me what I needed and made sure that the family was okay. And then, once I told him that we were okay, he went into work mode. You see, Curtis, Terrence, and I have been friends for over 25 years. We started in karate, he was our sensei, for which Terrence received a brown belt and I had a green belt. And we had dinner together, we worshiped together, and, excuse me, and we worked on several projects. Terrence also was aided by Curtis in helping him establish his business, which was the spot. Throughout the years, he's done many things for us as a family, and we've been friends for that long, and we continue to be. Curtis was the man who put bows on mailboxes in the community to pay homage to my husband. He was the one who set up a spotlight in the courthouse area with the posters and people signing their condolences. So I wonder those that signed the condolences, signed the petition as well. He raised money for the Florence Seven at the Sweet Potato Festival, came straight to the house, put the money on the table, we separated it, and he asked that I give equal amounts to each of the individuals, which I did gracefully. The Terrence Caraway Fallen Officers Memorial Park, and I emphasize memorial, not recreational, will not only bring revenue and visitors to our town, it educates and possibly motivates others to selflessly serve. The Fence End Order Court will be available for multiple uses to serve the community. The Intention and Per... The intention and purpose will be the acknowledgement of sacrifices made, education through the history presented, and bringing our community together for the common good. April sixteenth was the official announcement of the memorial park, and I stress memorial park. I was elated and proud to see a vast array of support. There were council members that offered support as well, friends and relatives that offered support and assistance. And I was very thankful. And I left knowing that Terrence was pleased. I need for you to know that I do what I do for Terrence only. My sole purpose is to uplift him through his life and his legacy. The message that I took from last Sunday's sermon at my church was, "Let a man examine himself." We spend more time examining others than our own self. So I ask that you examine your attitude, your appreciation, and your dedication. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Daniel Gladys, brother officer Carrollway. I'm a neighbor here in Darlington. And I know that the concern of the park is, and also that you mentioned earlier that there's too many parks in Darlington. But I'm here to say, there's not enough parks in Darlington. I grew up here. I know the attitudes here. And when kids have nothing to do, it will result to other things, such as violent crimes or anything. I work here. I serve this town. I mentor children. And what I do for a living is on the back end of giving kids nothing to do. Because I work with kids who are in jail and poor fathers or didn't have a father or didn't have anyone to look up to, much less anywhere to go. So right now, it really limits them their options. Look at what you also create, a problem for the community. So it's not only a park that's just to honor my brother, but it's an inspiration to our kids. And we all came together back in October and ever since. We should come together now and think about what's best for our community and what's best for our kids.
I know we got three spots out here, but never would I thought it would be controversial to put a park out there, a memorial park. The only qualifications that when I donated the park to Mrs. Carrollway's Foundation was that I wanted a waterfall. They worked out the original, but I put it on, with the cotton gin was over there and my stretch of property was with Mr. Evans. He asked me to buy that property, I'm talking about selling it, because I was in the memorial there and said, "We noticed that part of there is coming into town and being more visible, more seen to there." And, you know, we talked about different things, what Terrence would like. Terrence liked working with boys, working with girls club. And so that's where we came up with the idea of a ballpark. Having a fifty-foot, about twenty-five-foot cage in, and if people were fun enough, people would get run over. It's gonna be caged in, sixteen-foot basketball court where they can play kickball or basketball, or whatever they wanna do, or they sit on a picnic table. Some of the old people that she brought in from a memorial dedication of the day were saying they would love to come down and have a time also for their families to be honored, their dozens that died also. So again, we're looking to put three hundred and eighty-five names on the park. We never had to put another name on it. It's already grown, it's three hundred and seventy-seven names. Today it's kind of, it's up to three eighty-four now. Four more officers just died of understanding the street in the past week in good places. This is a memorial park to honor those that have fallen. We will also be, like bikers, there's five of us from your town, our town, city, that will be running three hundred and ninety-four miles for the ten county officers and for the officers that died. We'll be physically running three hundred and ninety-four miles starting June tenth for six days. And so four more people besides myself will physically run for that. So again, we just ask for your support and the councilman has asked us to film and ask for support, and we'd love to see that you be a part of it. Tell the park lights.
Just have a question. This is something that has been put together by a private foundation. This is not the City of Darlington. So the City of Darlington is not being asked to create anything.
Correct.
We're being asked if we would like to make donations. If we would make a donation. So in reality, I'm assuming that if the city's only interested in building I don't want you to make a donation, whether or not. What you are proposing fits our organization.
Well, we aren't sure of that, but the organization's on the move and it's improved.
And so at least all that is destroyed.
DOT has approved it for Darlington, for the park.
And so I simply had one person call me today that had no problems with the idea of the memorial park, but had some concerns about the basketball courts. Sent it probably that might, it could change somewhat the nature of that being as Mrs. Jackson said, senior neighborhood. But otherwise, I was simply approached by the city aspect of making sure that there were more.
In the days I was out there physically out there cleaning, people were right, left on the bikes, I was thanking them, I said, "Love it." Mrs. Jackson did come over with her concern. And Mrs. Green next door come over also, threw up a bit, her grandchildren did come over and play. Because again, it's just a small, small area, the back area, the back left corner, away from the road. Safety always. And there's also a brick wall out there.
So the donation, it seems like cleared everything else for the organization concerned. It's like the city cannot, I don't know, do anything to prohibit it from being a place.
We're not asking for approval, we're just asking for some donation. From hospitality, because it would make people want to see.
Would you, in view of these, what's been voiced about the basketball court? And we also have playing the city, or of the city's heart that we have that has the name of Terrence Carrollway will include the basketball court? Would you consider, maybe because of the concerns of the, that's been voiced of the people in the neighborhood, kind of, you know, just not having the basketball court?
Well, if you notice on the diagram, it is a quarter court. It is not a full court, it's not a half court. And it will be interactive. It will be used for whatever necessary purposes. My thoughts were, children can come and we can read stories within that contained area. Give them history of law enforcement. If someone wants to host a party or a giveaway or a drive, a food drive or something to that effect, it would be used interactively by all children and adults, can't see your citizens.
It's not compared to the basketball court that you go about there. There's one box that is still a hundred, but this is fifteen foot, about twenty-five foot, it's a smaller area. So somebody's there, almost like a, like when you come to my gym, my gym's twenty-five thousand square feet, but there's a four hundred square foot room in the back that you can house your children for an hour, you know, for an hour and a half, where they can have something to keep busy. Same way here, so people are there to make the park more interactive. So just as we come to the name and leave, that they could, if family wants to come and have a day there, a few hours there with the kids.
Ask the owner, you know, it's the owner that's got the problem.
Yes. And they're for the law enforcement.
Let's see, one of the main reasons for the park on, yes, on Southern Path, Southern Path, was to address what you're talking about there. You know, give the kids something to do. That they've been asking about, this basketball court, all the time you turn around, you got that door. But there is in an area where there are multiple children. It is an area, and that would, and to provide the kinds of recreational equipment for all ages.
If you take what he said earlier, what Mrs. Jackson said, I think it's two meaning. To my knowledge, there's one on Brunson Garden, that's what you'd be in with that, Russell Garden. Correct, basketball court over there, that's been there for years. So then we're building a new one over here, that was school, be a carryin' of bread, a new park. And then this will be no basketball court, for people to play. So if he wanted to go out to the new one that you're building and show up with fifteen guys to play basketball, and Mrs. Green's children came over and wanted to play, then they wouldn't have the way to play where they're out there in the street. So it's multiple options for people to.
I have a question. If we have a certain, Curtis said today, and Mrs. Carrollway did, hospitality funds, can we have sort of a tab and we tell people if you're more interested in going after hospitality funds, fill out an application?
We don't have that process.
We don't have that process.
Whenever you give your 501(c)(3) done, would you like to come back?
Sure. Yeah, I appreciate that. We do, I hate to do things piece by piece. I don't mind talking about this in person.
I think we take it for information and knowledge, and then we can also make a decision now.
We appreciate your consideration and listening to our information.
Thank you.
Okay, unfinished business, second reading of orders two thousand nineteen zero seven, zoning of five oh four Young Street, hour ten. We already did that next season, and now we're doing the second one for the Robert Williams. Second motion, please.
And Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the second reading of orders two thousand nineteen zero seven, zoning of five oh four Young Street, Darlington, South Carolina.
Our second amendment.
It's the copy goes to the seventh, and we receive the orders for two thousand nineteen zero seven, zoning of five oh four Young Street, hour ten. All in favor, if you can say it. Please have it say it right, would you tell me?
And Mayor, I make the motion, we approve the second reading of orders two thousand nineteen that's the way of the zoning of the second block.
I suck up. Excuse me. Wait a minute. Oh, let's say it, let it go tight, huh? Please have it say it right. Okay, moving around a little. Okay. Number eight, the mayor's award. Gloria Heinz. When you look around the city and you see people working and you're not ragging, you're not, you recognize them on your own. And I have two that I want to recognize tonight. I went over and ordered these plaques of them. I have one for Mr. Isaac Fuller. And I have one for Mr. Abbott, Steve Abbott. Okay, Mr. Isaac, you know where he is. He's stationed around Square. He was up around the square. When you go around and you talk to him, he's smiling. And when I asked another day, I needed him to come tonight, six thirty, I said, "What did I do wrong?" I said, "It did nothing wrong." I said, "Just come on up." People talk about Isaac, and I talk about, hey, keep the square clean. He goes around, he's sweet, he's a very nice young man, works for the city. And does a whole lot of great things for the city, keeping the square clean and surrounding areas of the square. One man that did get recognized, Mr. Steve Abbott. I think I called him my buddy. Mr. Steve, during Christmas time, he was the one that went out and connected the music up. He selected music and went back and cut it off. If there was something wrong, if it wasn't on or off or whatever, I would call him. He would come back. He takes care of all that mics and stuff for us. And I want to recognize these two young men of the city tonight to let them know that we care about them, that we appreciate. Some things, some things are small to some people, but this is big to me. They need to be recognized for what they do. Y'all come up. Come on up, up, Steve. We want to take a title, we go sign the wall. Want to take it here? Want to close the door?
Go ahead.
We want to thank you for such a good job that you do. We want to take separate pictures and then we want to take one separate, together, okay? Oh, oh.
Y'all, we'll take a step, everybody take a step back. All right, one, two, three. Okay, you want to do separate?
Separate. Keep up the good work now, don't stop. And I know you're gonna keep it up too, aren't you? Always smiling. It's a great job. Boy, I didn't read it though. Isaac, come on back up. Let me hold yours. Sorry about that. Mayor's award, May seventh, two thousand nineteen, presented to Isaac Fuller and Steve Abbott. Thank you for all of your outstanding service. We appreciate all of the hard work and dedication. Gloria C. Heinz. Ms. Darlington? That's my, you see what we like? Okay, go on then, okay? Fatherhood, Man to Man, Derek Dees.
Good evening, again. My director, Derek Dees, was not able to attend tonight due to a schedule conflict. But I'm here to speak on behalf to inform you about Man to Man Fatherhood Initiative. Man to Man Fatherhood Initiative has been around since two thousand. We have served five counties, Florence, Darlington, Marlboro, Chesterfield, and Dillon. We provide fathers with services from employment, child support, visitation, pension, after relationships, economic stability, record expungement, and numerous other services to help fathers become better fathers, productive citizens, and positive men in their community. Children need their fathers. Children have better success in school, athletics, and in life when their fathers are involved. Man to Man was considered an ATI program, which is an alternative to incarceration. So a lot of times when you see someone in family court before a judge will put them in jail, they will send them to us to provide services to get them back on track. And just to give you a little bit of numbers for our impact, in the PE region, since two thousand two, over two thousand three hundred and twenty-two fathers have been served by Man to Man. In two thousand eighteen, we have served four hundred and twenty-four participants, nine hundred and twenty-one children, in which twenty-three percent of the fathers had an improved relationship with their children and over ninety percent participated in child and father activities. Over seventy-two thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars were paid in child support in two thousand eighteen. And we saved taxpayers over one point two million dollars through jobs and not in jail. In Darlington, we've served over four participants since two thousand seventeen and have saved taxpayers of Darlington County one hundred and five thousand dollars. So my director, which he wants to schedule another meeting in which we're gonna request funds for our particular program. And we just want to make sure that you know the impact that Man to Man had here. We're also searching for offers that we're gonna be able to use here right now. We operate out of the Florence-Darlington Tech Building and Harts Building. And also with our program, our participants are provided with a meal at meeting time with our group sessions, and we also provide them with transportation. That's part of the need for us as a program to be able to help the citizens of Darlington. So when we come and we ask for these things, there's a lot of things it's gonna cover. It also covers parent and child activities where we're able to host prayer breakfast, other activities for kids, providing them with field trips with their fathers, and increasing father activity in Darlington County. We know that a lot of our kids are born into not a two-parent household. And a lot of times the father is always pushed aside. It's always been done through government programs such as public housing, where you may have an apartment complex with a hundred... where you may have an apartment complex with a hundred apartments, but there's no dads that allow to be there. So, now we have to see and correct the problem, so how do we fix it and make our fathers part of our children's lives? Well, we have to do it through a strong fatherhood program, and making sure that these dads, no matter what background they come from, and where they come from, that they're able to be fathers to their children. A lot of times we look at a lot of men as deadbeat, and sometimes they're actually just dead broke. So, what we're here to do is to work with the citizens of Darlington, City Council, and, and anyone, anyone who wishes to volunteer with our program to give our kids a better opportunity in the future. We always know that without fathers, kids are more likely to go to jails or commit violent crimes. But we've seen where within our particular program of kids that we monitored through our program, that they're, they're committing less crimes, they're actually doing better in school, and their graduation rates are improving. So, I want to provide you that information of Man-to-Man, if you have any questions, I'll be here, well, be free to answer.
But how many do you have, you represent here in Darlington, in the city of Darlington?
Forty.
You have forty?
And we've recently, we've only opened our Florence office, um, three years ago.
And when do y'all meet in Darlington?
Every Wednesday at four o'clock.
At the?
Florence-Darlington Tech in Hartsville.
But in Darlington, y'all meet?
We actually pick our participants up from here, and we take them there. To Hartsville. We actually had a scheduled time that we used to meet on Mondays at, at the Darlington County Library, but at the library, you can only schedule so many, give twelve days out of the year, that you can schedule an exact time for a room, so on some mornings, we would get bumped off if there was another program that wanted to sign up, so that's why we were going with the more secure location.
Any other questions? Thank you. PDRTA, it's Don Strickland.
Good evening, thank you Mayor, Council for having me here tonight. My name is Don Strickland, I'm the interim executive director of PDRTA. I met most of you, but not all of you. Chuck McVill is the previous director, retired February twenty eighth, and, um, and I've been in that role since then as interim. And so I'm coming tonight, um, just want to share some, some good news. Um, you all, I brought up a couple of different graphs for you to be able to look at this evening, not sure if you have them, but if you do, you'll see within that, that, um, the Dart Route in Darlington, um, is still one wonder. We're up from twenty and twenty-five percent this year. If you're looking at the graph, the red numbers, uh, the red bars through April, you'll see how they're pretty much powering over everything else after two previous years. So, the service itself is, is doing, is doing great. Um, we, you know, a lot, make a contribution to a lot of different things, you know. For one, I'd say the service is definitely needed, that's, that's the one question. Um, a couple of other things is our operators are doing a wonderful job promoting the service. Um, we have a couple that, that actually will, they see someone walking, they'll actually slow down, kind of open the door and, and, and ask, you know, do you know about this service? They'll give them schedules, they'll make sure they're aware. Um, for a long time, it's been the communication piece, I think there's been some issues. And, uh, and now folks have become more aware, they know that it's a safe, dependable ride, there's cameras on board, the drivers are, are very friendly, it's a comfortable ride, and they know that they can trust, uh, the driver to be able to get them to and from wherever, wherever they need to get to. I wanted to share that, um, you know, just thank the city for previous contributions to be able to help, help us sustain this service. For those of you that don't know, roughly seventy-five percent of our funding that we, you know, are, that have, comes from the federal government, we get about fifteen percent from the state, and then we need about fifteen percent on the local level. Except for every fifteen dollars we get on the local level, we're putting a hundred dollars for the service on the road. Um, and, and that, it goes a long ways, and, you know, you get a big, big, big return on, on your investment there. One other thing I wanted to mention is that through the state, we've been able to secure some new, um, technology, and anybody with a smartphone, in just a few short weeks, will be able to track where the bus is. So, in July, when it's a hundred degrees outside, and you have a senior citizen that's been waiting in a bus stop for fifteen minutes in the past, looking for the bus, they won't do that anymore. They can sit comfortably, you know, in the AC on their couch if they want to, and look at the phone, know exactly when the bus is gonna be at their stop, go out there, they may wait, still may wait a minute or two, make sure they don't miss the bus, because it'll be an hour before it comes back. But, um, it's a feature that we're excited about, and I think it'll go a long ways. We'll be able to share that with, you know, the hospital, PD healthcare, all, all the different locations here, to be able to help out. Uh, one thing I did mention was the Darlington-Florence commuter bus. It's also, it's not doing as well as the Dart bus running around the city, but we're taking students to work, we're taking folks, uh, students to school, mostly tech students. There's a few going, transferring to Francis Marion, and we also have many going to work in Florence, who are bringing funds back to Darlington, spending it locally, yeah, I think that's, that's a big thing there. Um, the Saturday service is still doing well, you know, Council approved, uh, moving forward and trying to get four hours of Saturday service, continues to, to do strongly, we're getting back to our new fiscal year, which starts July. Only other thing I wanted to mention was that, um, I can have to say that I'm a Darlington County resident now.
All right.
Glad, glad to be here, and I just want to thank you all for your support, and if you have any questions or anything I can do for you, please let me know.
Thank you.
Hospitality tax funding request, um, that will be for, um, Freedom Fest and the Veterans Memorial.
Freedom Fest is asking for fifteen thousand dollars, which is the same amount we've given them each of the last five years, so we recommend fifteen thousand dollars for, uh, hospitality tax for Freedom Fest. Well, you get the bottom of the circle here.
All in favor?
I'd like the motion.
I'm not waiting in a motion there, go make a motion.
I'd like the motion that we approve fifteen grand for the, uh, fifteen thousand dollars for the, um, Freedom Fest.
It's a motion, it's a popular motion, the second, we give fifteen thousand dollars to Freedom Fest, all in favor? If there's no sign, uh, they just have to say it right, if you care. Now, for the, um...
The Veterans Memorial is, uh, expanding, we gave them seventy-five thousand dollars in 2013 and 2014 when they were putting it together, they've quit, ten now, they're adding three more walls, which will be room for another nine hundred plus acres.
How much are they requesting this year?
Ten thousand?
Ten thousand.
I'd like the motion that we approve ten thousand for the Veterans Memorial.
Second. It's a popular motion, the second, we see ten thousand, give ten thousand, like, the memorial, the Veterans Memorial, all in favor, if there's no sign, uh, they just have to say it right, if you care. Okay, um, the trash container ordinance discussion.
Maybe it's a rock, has that?
Thank you. Um, I was asked by some members of council and some residents, uh, to look at our ordinance as far as the roll carts themselves being placed, where they're placed down the street, when they're taken in, and that sort of thing. In your packet that I just gave you today, you'll see, this first little paragraph here is the original text. Um, and of course, it's, you know, about a paragraph, it's not very specific, doesn't include a lot of things. Most of it we need to take out just to correct the ordinance, because the county doesn't have the yellow bag anymore. So, um, if anything else, we probably should do that. Below that, based off of some research of about eight other municipalities, Camden, Dillon, Florence, Hartsville, Lake City, and Sumter, and looking at their ordinances and how they handle it. Most of them do have a timeframe on it, a specific time that your trash can is supposed to be put out, and a specific time that it needs to be taken back in. Some of them don't list a specific time, like ours currently doesn't. Um, Dillon's does not, and Florence's does not, however, Florence's does say they need to be, they continue to be out of sight until time of collection, which is sort of vague. So, the proposed text here, and obviously I put more than you probably need, that you can see here to cut stuff out than add stuff in, um, that, and this, I'll go line by line, to add to section seventy-one. The first would be, uh, pretty much the same. Roll carts shall be placed at the pickup point on the pickup day set by council nearest to the garbage truck route. Roll carts shall not be placed further than three feet from the edge of the curb or roadway, in front of or adjacent to a mailbox to interfere with the delivery of mail, placed in or left in a driveway or roadway to inhibit ingress or egress or otherwise black block traffic, or to cause a traffic hazard, placed on sidewalks, entryways, we've had issues with people complaining about them being left on sidewalks and things like that. Now, this would technically put some really specific language that officers or codes enforcement officer or police officer could, um, address for the individual. This would also, this proposal includes adding the notions that injurious items are prohibited. This is, a lot of this is common sense stuff, but if it's in writing specifically, you can do something about it. If it's vague and not specific, there's not a lot anybody can, you know, correct anymore. And of course, the injurious materials is more for the safety of the employees, uh, emptying those cans. So, like hazardous materials, or needles, or stuff like that. So, you, you wouldn't want people placing that kind of material open in a, a roll cart.
Have you had a problem with that, so far?
I believe that there has been a...
I can answer that, we've had a few needles that weren't covered, and, and somebody gets stuck by one, they have to go to the hospital to be checked out, and then be tested. We've also had instances over the years where folks would put radioactive waste in, and then it, it reeks on the diaper counter, that's how, somebody giving chemotherapy or something, and they won't let us know what's going on, so those, those things do have, kind of, kind of issues.
And that's a continuous...
So, blue, or, uh, edicts, need to use needles.
Well, it's, it's more to make sure that they're put in some sort of container or wrapped in an appropriate object, so that they're not a danger to the folks that are emptying the trash. They're not just thrown into the roll cart in nothing.
What we would need to modify it a little bit, so it says, no items should be placed within a, in containers that could cause injury to...
The collection during normal handling of the containers. So, it's basically put it in something so that it's not gonna just easily stick somebody when they're in the cart.
And I'm just looking, because I don't see the, okay, I guess that's...
It's unfortunate that, you know, things, and it's just an accident, I'm sure.
Where they pick up, that, that the machine, that the machine picks the, the, the cart up.
The machine picks it, but if something falls out of the cart, onto them, and they're picking it up, and they don't know that there's a needle there, and you, then you have a, a year of testing to make sure that there's nothing wrong for that impulse. Container liners being permitted, container shall be moved by producers curbside note earlier than five o'clock on the day preceding collection, so if your garbage day was Monday, you would be putting it out on Friday, you'd put it out Sunday nights. Uh, and shall be returned to their storage location on the side or rear of the yard property, no later than eight PM on collection day. I believe our routes are usually done, like, off the fourth, three o'clock, so that gives folks a lot of time. And of course, this also adds in the text about where to put your, you know, to have it on the side yard or the rear yard, so it's not just sticking in your front yard. I don't know if, if you've looked at a lot of, um, visit wherever, brochures, or photos, or anything like that, you don't see roll carts in those pictures. It's just not a very pleasant look.
You know, something out the front yard, or you just, what do you, what do you say?
So, this would be that it's specifying where to keep your container, so rather than some folks are leaving it right in front of their front door, it would be on the side, not in a prominent place.
We're talking about when the trash is?
When, when you're, during the week after trash has already been collected. A household holder who fails to remove containers from curbside within twenty-four hours after the designated collection day shall be in violation. Container shall be sorted at the sides or backs of the house, but not at curbside reflection. Backyard garbage services, disabled persons may, at the direction of public service director, be provided when there is no one in the residence or employee by the household physically capable of moving the roll cart from the backside, backyard, or curb. A doctor's statement of disability must be furnished to substantiate the existence of disability. This is something that was actually in, in most of the ordinances somewhere, to give some sort of help to the folks that maybe really can't physically move the roll carts.
Senior citizens that feel like the former, as it stands, now they go pick up their trash, and put it back.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, roll carts and the surrounding area shall be kept in a sanitary condition. By the household or tenant, repair or replacement of roll carts under normal wear and tear, or as a result of negligence of city collection forces, shall be the responsibility of the city. Any repairs or replacement due to negligence of the property owner or tenant shall be the responsibility of such party. Currently, ours doesn't say anything about that.
I, I will apologize, I want to go back to number seven, I wanted to say that, so with this statement in there, the, um, our, our city worker can go and get the, uh...
It's just codified that, yes.
Okay, that's all I'm saying, because see, right, right now, they'd say they can't do all of that, we just be... Like the seniors in my neighborhood, we go pull them out.
Yeah, I, I do my neighbor's yard, my neighbor's roll cart.
So, I'm saying now that it would be okay for the guy to go back to...
Yeah, they just have to file some paperwork, just this way, we have a real particular process, so everybody treated the same.
I mean, this address.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, number nine, household garbage will be placed, so the contents shall not extend above the rim of the container and shall be closed at all times, except, except when filling or emptying, so this, you know, if people aren't filing stuff up, because that just encourages animals, the wind, anything to spread that trash all over the place. For the purposes of enforcing this ordinance, of this section, notice of violation shall be issued by police officers, code enforcement officers, or any person authorized to enforce municipal ordinances. We specified that in, in this text, because some of the, some of the, um, some of the texts had it different ways, both officers, police officers, and code enforcement, some had just police officers, some had just code enforcement. So, I just put all the language in there, so that this would say, everybody can serve a notes of violation.
Number nine, what happens around Christmas time, when, um, kids got, you've got three or four kids sometime in there, trash get counted?
Kind of, uh...
Yeah, so, I mean, if you're not on anything, so...
I think that's, that's probably an exception.
Who makes that rule, one?
Go ahead.
No, I was, I had nothing else.
That would be yes to the public work, sanitation department. And then, of course, any person found guilty of violating this article shall be fined no less than twenty-five dollars or no more than a hundred dollars, plus authorized cost assessment, et cetera, et cetera. In, in lieu of a monetary fine, they may impose litter gather, or may impose litter gathering labor for other public service. Currently, um, we don't have, the penalty is not specified like this. Some municipalities, Hartsville, City of Hartsville, City of Lake City, um, their penalties are a hundred dollars to five hundred dollars, uh, plus costs, or five to thirty days in jail, so, I mean, that's a little bit...
Listen, that's in Hartsville.
City of Hartsville, City of Lake City's, uh, ordinance. Now, whether they actually, you know, go to that extent, I, I don't know, but...
Can you put something in there where, um, code enforcement, or somebody does have the ability to exercise some discretion, as Mayor said, you got a bunch of people at Christmas time, you know, custom has been to take your boxes and try to stack them in each other, and put them next to...
Put them between the two carts.
Put them between the two carts, so they don't blow and things like that.
And we can certainly add, add what's attracted...
The city has always been the greatest that saw Christmas.
Yes. I made me up my Christmas, but...
But it is just a further question, so...
There was a, um, you had a lot of complaints from citizens, you said?
We had several citizens that complained, um, over the years, over various locations, about roll pack carts being, um, left out, left on the sidewalk, um, and there's really nothing, you know, the code enforcement officer can't necessarily give them, say a whole lot about it, because it's not specified and spelled out in the ordinance.
When we have these issues, who do they usually call?
Howard.
When you have these issues, they call you.
Usually they end up with Howard at some point.
Or Alex Austin.
They probably call Karen.
Or sometimes it goes to Karen. But there's folks that chronically call, because their neighbor leaves cans out in the street all the time. They don't move at all.
So it's the same households usually, that are calling?
Probably eight or ten that are the official offenders. And at least a lot of bad feelings sometimes. That's what we're usually asking to get involved in.
So number seven, would be a concern. We're asking people to give their personal information as it pertains to their disability, which could be a hit for...
I think it would simply be a letter from the doctor, saying this person is exempt from taking their roll cart out. And not necessarily need to specify a reason, I would think. Just to say that it's not, just somebody doesn't like taking their roll cart out, so they just say, oh, well, I just don't feel like taking it out. So I think I'm gonna say that I have something wrong with me, whether they do or not, just because they don't like Karen.
The one now, that could go by age, doesn't, Mr. Gallow. The one that you have now, it usually goes by age.
Or...
And we can adjust it to bid age or disability.
You don't have to specify what it is.
Yeah, yeah, I think this wouldn't necessarily be specified, what it is.
If you recall, Hurricane Florence, we got the list from the street department, those folks that have packed their pickups, and we would use that to check on their folks.
Right. They already have this in place.
This would just formalize it in a way.
That's your time. Tell you that guy.
Any other questions?
Any more questions? Need to do something more?
Yeah, I think we need to do some more discussion on...
More discussion on this?
Yeah, I think it needs to be, maybe some...
Send me whatever changes you might want to put in there, and we haven't put in that. This is certainly just an informational...
Very clear.
Thank you.
Thank you, brother.
Thank you.
The first reading of the ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero nine, Duke Energy Quarterly Franchise Fee. Usually they pay us by the year, but we are asking them now to pay us quarterly. So we need a meeting on that, so we can get our monies. Mr. Gallow, you wanna elaborate on that some more?
I can, yes, ma'am. We usually get a franchise fee from Duke Energy in June. It's a nice fat check in June, when we have lots of money. But from a cash flow standpoint, we're cashed for December and January, so we'd rather get some of that money quarterly. It helps just from a cash flow entry standpoint. And they agree to do that, we just have to amend the agreement that we have with them to show them. Chuck, the court treasurer, his pregnancy, agreed that it would be nice to have some of that money in December.
It is nice. Everybody understand that? You wanna make a motion?
I'll motion that we had set the first reading of the ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero nine, Duke Energy Quarterly Franchise Fee.
Second.
More discussion. It's the problem with the first, to receive the first reading, ordinance of the first reading, two thousand nineteen dash zero nine, Duke Energy Quarterly Franchise Fee. All in favor, if it doesn't sign I? May you have the same right, motion carries. Okay, number nine, receivers information, department reports, no action needed. Before we go to council comments, and we will have an executive session tonight, we may or may not vote after the executive session. Reminders, June fourth, two thousand nineteen, six thirty, regular monthly meeting, Darlington City Council. So any comments from council? If not, we got a motion to go into executive session. For recreational possible property purchase, economic development, possible property purchase, and possible property sale. City of Darlington, may or may not vote, council.
I make a motion that we go into executive session, regulation possible property purchase, economic development possible, property purchase, possible property sale. City of Darlington, may or may not vote after executive session.
All in favor? You got a second?
Second.
All in favor? Excuse us, please. Five minutes, that's just five minutes. Five minutes only, guys. We talked about recreational possible property purchase. Are you gonna go on that first?
I like the motion that we make an option to purchase the property, twenty-five hundred dollars, down payment for a hundred and twenty day option.
All in favor?
Down the refundable.
Second.
Yes, go ahead.
Let me...
You wanna add something to him?
But read the, somebody read the partial numbers in there. So we, so we know it's an option we could...
Right. Read the partial number, back here a minute.
Okay. I make a motion that we are going to pay twenty-five hundred dollars to take the portion of the wood, after the portion of one six six dash zero zero dash zero two dash zero zero one, that's fronting on US Highway fifty-two.
Second.
So property motion is second, that we... First, um... Option that the tax portion one six six dash zero one, dash zero two, zero five four, that's a portion of one six six zero zero, dash zero two, zero zero one, which is, it's exempt from the option of portion of the one six six zero 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 two. The frontage on US property fifty-two, or a uniform depth of property, three hundred ninety feet, is shown on the taxes today.
He should have...
Not, not the frontage property. Not the frontage property.
All except.
It's the frontage.
Not, not the frontage property. Except the frontage.
Except the frontage.
Right.
It's the back part, for the sum of twenty-five hundred dollars as a deposit.
Yes.
All in favor? If it doesn't sign I?
I know.
May you have the same right, motion carries. Okay, the second part that we'll go, okay, on the third part, we talked about Cameron's four to one-on-one exchange treat.
I like the motion that we approve the release of one-on-one exchange treat, exchange street, for Victor, another condition that Kevin gets all the appropriate paperwork. Technically, Webster Properties LLC, Webster Properties LLC.
Webster. Second.
Cameron's one-on-one on Exchange Street for Pixel Webster Property.
Webster.
Webster Property. All in favor? If it doesn't sign I? May you have the same right, I'm gonna motion carries. Okay, that's it. I'm gonna make a motion, what's what Rick said to do tonight, it's six o'clock. Sure, it's about six o'clock.
I like the motion that we adjourn.
All in favor? If you might just say that, they don't wanna go.
I said, I said.
It's a free for all.